Progress.
Good evening, everyone. I like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Cersei.
Here.
Great. Thank you. Looking ahead, just a reminder tomorrow is November 11th Veterans Day and the city offices and facilities are closed for the Veterans Day holiday. On Wednesday, November 17th, our regular city council meeting begins at 7:30. That evening, we have a presentation of the FY 2021 audit, a presentation of the police pension plan actuarial evaluation. And we will also have a present, a presentation from Adventist Healthcare talking about the, the urgent care facility and some proposals they have for other services that may be that they're proposing to replace the urgent care. Our voting session next week is second reading ordinance on the council compensation. Second reading ordinance awarding contract for organizational workforce needs and risk assessment. Second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to require installation and maintenance of window guards. Second reading ordinance approving a contract for construction management services. Second reading ordinance approving the purchase of replacement police vehicles and a resolution providing for the council's winter recess. And then our work session next week will be a Housing and Community Development Director update, including annual reports from Tacoma Langley CDA and Old Town Business Association. And also in ARPA funding update as well. And for tonight's agenda, we did send this around and post it. But we were, we got, we received the redistricting maps a bit late and so they had just been posted earlier today, not giving members of council really an opportunity to look at them. So we are not having that work session this evening and I will discuss with city staff if we move that to next week or what our contingency plans are. In addition, we will be, after we are done with our public meeting tonight, the city council will be voting to go into a closed session this evening to discuss, make sure I say this right. We'll vote to go into a closed session to discuss matters related to collective bargaining with the Ask Me Local 3399. The meeting will be closed pursuant to Annotate Code of Maryland General Provisions Article 3-305B9. After the closed session, the council will not reconvene in an open session. So that is our, takes care of our business. And then for tonight, we do have a presentation exciting on our new Ave Bike Way 60% Designs for Section B. And I see Mr. Friedman is with us. I believe I am turning it over to him.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Stewart. So hi, everyone. My name is Alex Friedman. I'm the planner for the city Tacoma Park. And tonight I have invited on a couple of our consultants for the new Ave Bike Way. And as just a quick refresher, the New Ave Bike Way is an in-progress in-design bike way that would be extending from Holton Avenue along New Hampshire Avenue down to Poplar. And for the sake of getting funding through grants for the design, we've divided the project into two sections. Section A, which is the northern part, and section B. So tonight, we're talking about section B, which runs from Auburn Ave to Poplar Ave. And our consultants are on to share about the just completed 60% or semifinal designs. So once these are finished, we received funding to move on to the 100% designs. And we're really excited because that moved us close to actually putting a bike lane in. So I'm going to hand it over to Rob Gillespie and Stacy Barefoot from RKMK. And they are going to walk y'all through what's going on with the 60% designs.
Great. Thanks, Alex. Good evening, everyone. Well, just Stacy's going to get the presentation loaded and we'll, we'll get started. So yeah. Happy, very excited tonight to be presenting on behalf of City Tacoma Park that RKMK completed semifinal design of the new Ave Bike Way Section B improvements. As Alex said, funding was provided through Maryland Bike Ways Program Grant with matching funds from the city. And presenters this evening, next slide please, presenters this evening are myself, I'm project manager, and my colleague Stacy Barefoot, who is a lead design engineer. Slide. So the Section B Bike Way project limits are along the southbound side of New Hampshire Avenue, again from Poplar Avenue north to Auburn Avenue, which you can see in orange. And it's a distance of about a mile. And as Alex alluded to as well, you may recall that the 60% design for the Section A limits of the Bike Way was presented to the city council back in September of 2020. And that extends north from Auburn to Holley Lane, which is shown in yellow there. Project goals for the Bike Way retrofit include development of a low-stress enjoyable bike way. ADA compliance upgrades to sidewalk bus stops and intersection crossings. The project will provide bike connectivity from the southern limits of Tacoma Park to the planned Section A bike way improvements, including Sligo Creek Trail. Sections A and B will provide necessary bike connectivity also at transit bus stops, commercial and residential property along corridor, and the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Transit Center. Every effort is being made to minimize impacts to property and utilities as always. So our approach for 60% design development included necessary ADA compliance upgrades to intersections and bus stops required by MSHA and WMA. We also are utilizing the available low-volume, low-speed frontage roads as buffer separation for the Bike Way. Similar approach to what we're doing for New Ave. For the southbound section, you know, along 650 travel lanes. Where there are no adjacent frontage roads, a grass or paved buffer was provided between the Bike Way and southbound 650 travel lanes. Key facility types include a shared use path and a southbound shared lane with a contraflow bike lane within the frontage roads. We collaborated with agency stakeholders throughout concept, preliminary, and semifinal design stages. Now I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Stacy to take you block by block through the Section B limits.
Sure. Thank you, Rob. Right. What you'll see on the next several slides are the existing conditions and proposed improvements with some typical sections. And what you'll see here is that from the typical sections, each block is handled a bit differently due to different site constraints. For the first slide, Poplar Avenue to Conway Avenue, the existing condition provides about a five-foot wide sidewalk with an existing bus shelter. The sidewalk. Now, under the proposed condition, we're widening to the west to be able to accommodate an eight-foot wide shared use path with a two-to-three-foot paved buffer. That's going to require relocation of that bus stop and the bench associated with it. And we're not widening any further than that because from this picture, you can kind of see here this existing tree line. We're hugging that tree line with that relocated bus shelter. So we did everything we could to try to maintain traffic where it is. But keeping in mind that we really don't want to have impacts to that forest line. Next section is Conway Avenue to Prince George's Avenue. Existing condition again here provides a five-foot wide sidewalk. The proposed condition shifts the curb line to the east to accommodate an eight-foot wide shared use path. That's going to require a narrowing of the frontage road to about 22 feet typically, and an adjustment to this existing inlet that's here. Now, because we have this existing retaining wall with the mural and there's a water line running down the middle of Conway, we're a bit restricted on how far we could shift that curb line to the east. So that inlet has to have certain minimum horizontal clearances to that water line. So we shifted it over as far as we could. So an eight-foot wide shared use path was the maximum width we could provide here at this intersection. Next slide, Prince George's Avenue to Belford Place. The existing condition provides a five-foot wide sidewalk through the front, and there's a frontage road here. And under the proposed condition, we're going to close that frontage road and provide an 11-foot wide consistent with shared use path. One thing I want to point out is along that frontage road, we have a bifurcation, so an elevation difference between the frontage road and southbound Maryland 650, and there's a retaining wall separation. So our 11-foot wide shared use path is going to travel up the roadway and also have a two-foot wide paved buffer to the toe of that retaining wall to, to provide some shy distance to the wall. So it's a little more comfortable for cyclists. Next block is Belford Place, the shopping center. The existing condition provides just a five-foot wide sidewalk and a frontage road and then like a small median essentially or curving in between the frontage road and southbound Maryland 650. In this section, we're proposing to shift the travel lanes to the east slightly and narrow the lane selectively to be able to accommodate a five-foot wide contraflow lane. So that's for northbound cyclists. Southbound cyclists will share the lane with, with traffic on the frontage road and that'll be marked with sharrows. We'll still maintain on-street parking. Next section is at the New Hampshire Avenue Shopping Center. We wanted to point this one out specifically because this is a little bit different. We have, again, a bifurcation here. So there's this median essentially between the frontage road and southbound traffic and its bifurcated elevation difference. So we looked at the options and what we're going to provide is like a barrier curb retaining wall that will separate the frontage road from the southbound traffic. Again, this will accommodate a five-foot wide northbound contraflow lane, and that'll be marked in green. And it's going to have a two-foot wide buffer to that wall, again, to increase that shy distance to make it more comfortable for cyclists. The southbound path users will actually be on the frontage road, sharing it with traffic, and that'll be marked again with sharrows. This proposed condition will require a loss of parking in front of the shopping center along this stretch. And then from the shopping center moving north toward Ethan Allen, we have, again, an existing five-foot wide or seven, I'm sorry, seven-foot wide sidewalk approximately. The proposed condition is continuing that shift of the southbound lanes, selective lane narrowing, and providing an eight-foot wide shared use path with a two-foot wide paved buffer. In this condition, we do narrow the median. The existing condition is four feet. And this is between northbound and southbound 650 traffic. It'll be reduced to about two feet wide. Now, those geometric shifts that I was mentioning in previous slides, from Belford Place up to Auburn Avenue, you can kind of see it down here in this plan sheet, plan view snapshot. Again, that was done to be able to accommodate our proposed improvements from Belford Place to the shopping center, which is approximately here. We have the five-foot wide contraflow lane and then the shared southbound, shared southbound lane for cyclists and motorists. And from the shopping center to the north, we, we have an eight-foot wide shared use path with a two-foot paved buffer. The requirements to be able to carry out these proposed improvements are traffic signal modifications. We're upgrading APS CPS. Removing the mastarm pole at the New Hampshire Avenue Shopping Center and installing a new mastarm pole in the Maryland 650 median. We have select utility impacts. There are six utility poles, three fire hydrants, and then there's an electric meter and a vault relocation. And as far as property impacts, at the shopping center, that's the only location where, where we have anything, and that will require right-of-entry or an easement with the property owner to accommodate the traffic signal modifications and then that contraflow bike lane and or shared lane. Parking impacts, on-street frontage roads, there's 28 to 30 existing spaces now. We're, we're going to have to remove about 13 to 15 to be able to accommodate these improvements. From Conway to Prince George's, by where that wall is with the mural, we have about two spots being lost there. And that's because we need to fit the shared use path and avoid that wall. From Prince George's moving north to Belford, there's six because we're closing that frontage road to provide that shared use path. At Belford Place, that's at the northwest corner. There's one parking spot lost, and that's because we're putting in a curve extension, like a bump out there at that corner. And then in front of the shopping center, we'll lose six parking spaces to provide that contraflow lane and the share, for the shared lane.
Additional considerations are lighting, of course, and, and, you know, we'll evaluate lighting needs along the Bike Way. Intersection and roadway lighting does appear to be adequate along southbound 650. We're aware of the city, worked with Pepco recently in the last several years, to install supplemental LED lease lighting on those, on those Pepco poles. However, we, you know, the city may want to consider, one thing we noticed is to install LED lease lights on many utility poles between Belford and shopping center. Really just to consider that to improve, by improved lighting, particularly for the Bike Way. So there's also, you know, a need for shared use path lighting, and we'll evaluate that as well. One particular, I guess, part of the limits of the project would be Prince George's Avenue, Belford, between those two locations or side streets rather. And the supplemental path lighting would be Munich style, which is consistent with the city's UAV streetscape standards. Also recently installed for the Ethan Allen Gateway and Flower Avenue, Green Street projects. Excellent. The estimated construction cost for Section B, again, this is just Section B, is 1.8 billion. That includes utility relocations and a 20% contingency. It does not include final design fees or, or any right-of-way acquisition costs. And just some status and next steps. We did receive mandatory for approval back in October. We completed 60% design this month. And we're, we're very excited, as Alex had mentioned, that the city secured additional funding, complete final design. So we're ready to move full steam ahead on that and very excited to do so. And I, you know, the other goal, one of the main goals is to complete final design for both sections A and B currently. And that should put the city in a great position to advertise both sections for construction concurrently when funding is secured for construction. So we're going to start final design right after the new year and we'll continue to collaborate with all project stakeholders. And that includes our presentation. So thank you, everyone, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over since this is, I think, all in, I think it's all in Ward 2, correct? I will turn it over to my colleague, Councilwoman Dibala.
Thank you. There might, there might be a sliver in Ward 3. But yes, the majority of the impact and the majority of the bike lane itself are up this stretch in Ward 2. And I, I'm very excited to see the 60% design. I'm very excited to see the plans for the 100% design. So this, this is great. I do have some questions. You, you said, going broader first, you said that you had mandatory referral and you were, you got approval and that's great. Does that include approval from state highway to narrow the lanes and squish the median and all those proposals you're making to the traffic on New Hampshire?
Yeah, yes. And so
Really? Great. I thought they, oh, never mind what I thought.
Now, I was going to say, the city, Alex, Roz, Stacy, and myself, we've been collaborating with MSHA access management since the beginning for 15%, for 60%. They're aware that, you know, they have limitations. They don't want us reducing travel lanes, any, any less than 10 and a half feet. And I think WMA doesn't want us to reduce travel lanes to any less than 12 feet to the face of curb along, along the curb line because they have bus stops. So we're mindful of that. Our design accommodates that. And, you know, it, we don't want to exaggerate. It is, it is a minor shift, albeit, but it's enough to give us, you know, a couple of feet of buffer that we need to provide a little bit more separation and make it a safer facility.
Yeah.
That we're in a tight corridor here. So, so yes, MSHA is aware of it and we're, we're going to continue to work with them very closely.
Okay, great. Yeah. And I remember the last time we talked about it, there were utility poles and traffic lights being moved around and it, it sounds like that's all worked out and that is just wonderful. I have a couple of questions, section by section, working up from Poplar, Conway. So that first stretch, I don't think I have any questions at the moment. The, the section closing the frontage road. Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So where are the parking spaces that would be lost? Because this part of the frontage road doesn't have parking. Are you talking about the parking spaces that are in front of people's houses just north of this?
That's the photo on your right-hand side.
Yes.
The frontage road that we're going to close off and extend that shared use path up to Belford.
Okay.
There is actual, there is actual permit parking there on that, the, I guess it is the west side of the, the west, the curb line right there. Yep.
Okay.
So that, that's currently posted as, I forget what type of parking, but it has, you know, limited, you need a permit to park there.
Right, right. So you need a permit in that whole neighborhood close to New Hampshire to park because the apartment buildings in Prince George's County across the street. So did you receive feedback from any of the residents about the loss of the parking spaces?
So we didn't reach out particularly, you know, specifically to the residents. I, I think maybe, maybe Roz and Alex can speak further to that.
Okay. What I'm thinking is a, I would really like to sponsor a neighborhood Zoom meeting or if it's possible, an outdoor walkthrough in this stretch from here up to the shopping center and include people in this whole stretch to comment on some of the really localized impacts, just to make sure that everybody understands what they'll be getting and then what some of the impacts are that they might. I don't want any surprises. So that's a request. I was going to add that, but since we're on the stretch, I'd really like to do that before we move too fur, too much further ahead with design.
I can definitely follow up with you, Cindy, though.
Great, thank you. Yeah. So, so, and then there was, there was something that had gotten mentioned. The last time we talked about the city using that space to turn around, I assume that got, turn around their vehicles and I assume that got worked out. So moving to the next stretch.
Yeah, Stacy, sorry, just that, we have a, we have a T-turnaround there, right, that we're at the end of. Is that right?
We do.
You two have it in there. Okay, great.
Yes, and it's on the south side of this front. So, you know, if you imagine the extension of this photo over, it would be somewhere around here. And it's wide enough to be able, you know, we checked the turning movements. It's wide enough to be able to accommodate vehicles pulling in and heading back out for
Okay.
Those who are not familiar with this.
Is that going to take away from the park space or from this right-of-way space?
It's in the park space.
Okay. Now, that's something we want to point out to people. Okay. Go in one, one section up. I, I only have a couple more questions. This section, looking north to New Hampshire Avenue on the way to the shopping center. And then the next stretch, if I got that right, you have a you have two-way traffic on the bike lane as opposed to one dedicated two-way stretch. And distance-wise, it seems like there's room for the shared lane, the shared use path. But you don't do it that way in this stretch, on the stretch just south of it, going to the shopping center. Please explain why you're doing it this way.
Do you want to take that one, Stacy, or you want me?
And did I explain the question correctly? So you, the sidewalk, the shared use walk, but then you have a bike lane.
Yes. So I'll start with
So why not just have it all together? Yeah.
Okay. So for Belford Place to the shopping center, because of existing site constraints, the walls, utility poles, fire hydrants, we didn't have space here to be able to widen the sidewalk to provide that eight-foot wide path. And eight-foot wide, we don't want to put it directly against the curb line. You know, if we can at all avoid it, we're trying to hold like the two, two-foot paved buffer as, at a minimum if we can everywhere. But in this instance, we didn't have the space. We also are keeping in mind that there's the parking for all the residences here, so we wanted to hold our parking. We still need to maintain traffic going south, and we need to provide room for that bike lane.
Okay.
So the best, the best solution, yeah, that we could come up with was about, about a foot or so shift to the east for this existing median and providing in a two-foot wide monolithic median. And this scenario allows us to best keep the parking, maintain a lot, the maximum with lane that we could possibly, and still accommodate cyclists that want to travel northbound. So we, we made this a dedicated northbound lane, this, the contraflow lane, and southbound cyclists will share the lane with traffic.
But it goes, it goes back to, because of the retaining walls and those utility poles, you can't make that sidewalk wide enough to do the eight-foot there.
Correct, yes. There were, we did look into that, but there are just too many site constraints
Too many things to provide it. One thing I learned the last time is every time you move a telephone pole, the dollars start chicken up.
Yeah, yes, they do.
So then, then the next section, I had the same question, we just answered it, and then the last question that I have is the next section. No, I think it is this section. So has anyone been in touch with the owner of the, with the owner and the, and the businesses of the commercial property that's gonna lose the parking spaces, or is that something we still need to do?
That does still need to occur, as far as I know, and Alex and Roz might be able to Yeah, Alex and Roz will
We're, we're in the process of reaching out to the property owner, who's been a little hard to
Yeah, that's why. Okay, great, I don't think I have any other questions at the moment, and I look forward to working well with all of you to put together some kind of neighborhood, either in person or, or virtual meeting to make sure that everybody in the immediate neighborhood knows what's going on.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Kostic? Thank you, this is really exciting, and thank you for your work on this. I just have one comment and one question. My comment is that, you know, obviously we want to see this part get done, but looking to the future, I would love to see the next section from Poplar down to Eastern happen as well, just for that connectivity into DC and for the bus lines and everything down, down that direction, I think that would be fantastic. My question is, what kind of protections you're building in for the locations along the way where the, the bike lane will be crossing cars that might be turning right into parking lots or some of the side streets there? How are you, are you marking that for bicyclists or cars, or are there some, some steps you can take to just make sure that's, those interactions are as safe as they can be?
Well, the first thing we did was we tried to narrow our wide intersections. We have a lot of pavement out here, so where we could, we tightened up the curb line radii and, and we made extensions as necessary to make the crossing at intersect shorter for cyclists, because I think that's the first priority really is to make sure that there's less conflict area with turning vehicles. Secondly, like with the contraflow lanes, especially over the driveway, actually, you know, from this area moving to the south, we do have pavement markings that'll be installed to help kind of delineate where those cyclists will be. Or in the north, going northbound, southbound, they'll be sharing the lane with traffic, so they'll be a little bit more visible, and they have, you know, a wider area in which to operate.
And, and like, just to, you know, build on what Stacy's saying, that, you know, those will be enhancing the, the pavement markings with green, green paint, really to, to enhance those conflict areas where vehicles and, and bikes, cyclists rather, will be, you know, in conflict potential, so. Again, just enhance, enhance markings and, as Stacy said, just tightening up the radiuses, trying to slow down the movements, reducing some of the pavement at, at those intersections, that's, that's what I mean for rest of this design.
Great, thank you, I think that, from what I've seen, the green seems like it's pretty effective, and I, I love the idea of narrowing those, those conflict zones. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to Councilwoman Kostic, and you, when is it that you propose to put in sort of the, I think it's the bollards, the, the flexible bollards to, for a protected bike lane? And would those be appropriate here? I've not seen them. So just to kind of follow up, I think it's, follows on Councilwoman Kostic's question.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the issue is just space, it's, it's very constrained on those frontage roads. And we could act flex posts, but there are, you know, it's a possibility, it, it's just going to be a maintenance consideration, and they end up getting struck a lot. I mean, that's another, other consideration is just, you know, maintenance and, and cost to, to replace, so. But, but not a bad thought, and it's been used elsewhere and been successful, so it's, it's definitely a consideration.
Yeah, I think a lot of folks in, in the bicycle community, I've heard we talk about bike lanes, they're like, you better be talking about protected bike lanes. So I think Mr. Freeman, as we're getting some other public input on it, that might be also a good place to kind of think about it while we're doing some of the walkarounds with Councilwoman Navala and stuff.
And let me just add to, to that same, to that same point, a lot of the front, the front roads are very low volume, low speed, so there's a little bit more comfort there, the, the main concern is obviously the southbound six fifty traveling. That is, that is definitely separated by curb walls, frontage road medians, or at least a two or three-foot buffer space, which, as you get down towards, towards Poplar. So there is some buffer, but, but to your point, if it was, if it was a, if it was a bike lane right on six fifty, that's where you really want to make sure you have good buffer separation, you know, if it's right at the same grade, if you will, but with flex posts or or, or more markings and, 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 you know, as much space as possible, so.
Flex posts, that's why they're called flex posts?
I, that's one term. Flexible, flex posts or bollard, yep, different terms, yep.
Yeah, good. All right, I'm not seeing any other questions at the moment. This is really exciting. Thank you for, for coming back again, and we look forward and seeing you again soon, and keep moving this forward. I don't know, Mr. Freeman, do you have anything else that you want to add before we close this out?
I know, but I think that's about all, but I'm, I'm happy to follow up with anyone who, you know, if any last minute questions come up after the fact.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, all right. So now we'll be moving on to the public comments, let me just pull this up. And first we have public comments on voting items, and we have three people signed up for the first reading ordinance on council compensation. The first person is Brendan Smith, is he with us?
He is here, he's in the meeting.
Great.
I am, here I am, can you hear me, babe?
Yeah, hold on one second, Mr. Smith. See, this city clerk will get our clock started. Me? Okay, oh, well, let's restart. All right, now you can go.
My name's Brendan Smith, I'm a Ward three city resident, the city's arts and humanities coordinator, and I'm the acting vice president of Astine Local 3399 from the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees Union. We represent about eighty city employees who work across all city departments. Most of our members are black or Hispanic, and some of us are working second jobs to make ends meet. I wanted to start first sort of with a comment about the format of these meetings, because I think many people don't understand why they're still being held online. The community center and the library have been reopened for months, there's young kids in childcare, city employees, city residents, art classes, seniors doing yoga, and they're all back at the community center, so I, I think people would welcome the city council back there as well. Holding meetings online, it just creates additional barriers for public participation, and it sends the wrong message about recovery from the pandemic. So our union members have been fighting for fair wages with city management for more than nine months, and the city has not budged from a proposed 1.8% increase. Today, Bureau of Labor Statistics just reported that the annual inflation rate is now 6.2%, which is the largest annual increase in almost thirty years. We're seeking only a 5.4% cost of living increase, so we effectively will still be taking the pay cut if the salaries aren't keeping pace with the cost of living. Proposed 1% wage increases insulting to the city employees who keep the city running, especially when the city council will be voting tonight to double your own salaries. With 108% wage increase, the mayor's salary, and 102% increase in council member salaries. Ordinants also provide full-time benefits and a compensation package that will cost the taxpayers up at $335,000 per year for just seven people. Our requested wage increase for eighty people is about $65,000 less. Council's also talked about equity and helping the next council, but that makes it sound like none of you will be on that council. The incumbent win rate was actually 100% 2020 and 2018. So if you're going to run for reelection next year, I think you need to clearly state that tonight and acknowledge that you'll reap large financial gains from this ordinance if you're reelected. The council's also seeking full-time pay and benefits, even though five out of seven of you told the council compensation committee that you don't work full-time hours. Only two of you said that you work more than forty hours per week, while five others reported hours ranging as low as twenty hours per week. You also be improving salaries and benefits for yourselves that far exceed neighboring municipalities with larger populations. That's inequitable and a poor management of the city's fiscal resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, Mr. Romanoff, I think I believe you are next.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for allowing me to talk for three minutes, I won't take up that much time. I think Brendan had a lot of right valuable points, and I would encourage you to listen well for that, I, I think that it's poor timing on the council's part right now, considering the inflation that Brendan mentioned, but also the negotiations which I believe are happening tomorrow, as well as the rollout of a somewhat botched stormwater tax system as a citizen in Tacoma Park, it just feels as though the council's looking for ways to spend money as it taxes it, so I'm not going to take the full three minutes here, but you know, it's just really poor optics from my, from my perspective, and I think from another, a, a few other citizens would agree with me on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I had Arthur David Olson also signed up to speak, is he?
Should be here.
Okay. There you go.
All right. Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. A large council pay raise is meant to make it possible for a more diverse group of people to run and serve. That purpose is not advanced by giving that raise to folks who are now on the council, or who have been in the past. I suggest that the new pay system apply only to folks first elected or appointed to the council after 2021, with other folks paid according to the system now in place. Limiting raises will make it clear to the community that the council is not enacting them for personal benefit. Limiting raises will also reduce city expenses. What will serve the purpose of increasing council diversity? One way is to set term limits, as the council did this year for the city's committees. During council discussion of the matter, I heard praise for term limits that could bring new blood to the committees. I can think of no reason why the six-year limit the council established for committees is not appropriate for the council itself. Council diversity can be increased even without council action. You as individuals can announce sooner rather than later that you will not seek reelection in 2022, because there is absolutely nothing better than an open seat to attract new candidates. We have before us the recent example of committee on the environment members choosing to step down so that a more diverse group could be appointed. Elected officials might follow that example. I hope the council will corporately and individually show seriousness about council diversity by limiting pay raises to new council members, establishing term limits, and stepping down. Thank you.
Thank you, I think that was it for council compensation. Sorry, I lost my list. Next, we had Ms. AJ Campbell on the first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to require installation and maintenance of window guards in certain rental housing.
Ready?
The clock disappeared, oh, yeah.
My name's AJ Campbell, hello, I live in Ward five on Rona. First off, I'd like to support the comments of Brendan Smith, a phrase I never personally thought I would say out loud, but you know, I think he makes some very good points, and he's been speaking a lot to the community, and I think it's important that the city workers get what they need, and the city negotiate in good and honest faith. You know, real leaders put their staff needs before their own, and the timing on the discussion about council compensation, and, well, just, it looks bad. But I'm here to talk about window guards, and, you know, it was a project that I worked on for months and months and months, and I want to applaud the efforts of council member Smith and council president Tom Hucker for their leadership on this issue and shepherding the project through, it was a labor of love, and it took months and months and months. When I heard the landlord speaking at Ezekiel's memorial call, or call, I recognized him right away, I knew who he was, and I contacted him, and I said, why don't we put up window guards? It's a great idea, my daughter was personally saved by window guards. Why don't we, why don't you put them up in your buildings? He said no. If he was not going to do it then, he was never going to do it. It didn't matter, he'd have to be forced to do it. So this was the only way forward. You know, the pandemic made it even more important to deal with window guards, because kids were in homes that they may be watched, being watched with a relative, they may not have the same environment that they're used to, they may not have the same supervision they're used to. And window falls actually increased during the pandemic. So I'm, I'm proud to have gotten this done. And it's nice to see that Tacoma Park is bringing their own rules in line. And let's see if we can maybe organize a bulk buy, New York City did this when they first transferred over back in the seventies by adding window guards. They made it so that the city could bulk buy at a massive discount coordinating with the landlords to install the window guards as quickly as possible, and it worked. So let's give that a go. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Campbell. That is it for a public comments on voting items, public comments on other items. See, do we have Dee Herman with us? Yes, I see.
Good evening. Greetings, everyone, thank you for letting me testify tonight, my name is Dee Herman, I live in Ward five. Tonight, I'm representing Climate Action Coffee, subgroup of Tacoma Park Mobilization and Tally Tacoma Alliance for a Local Living Economy. The city declared a climate emergency in 2019. We agree, and we believe this emergency demands urgent and sustained attention. I'm speaking tonight to share the good, the bad, and the actionable in our community regarding this. The good. As you may well know, Climate Action Coffee, CAC, focuses on regional climate action and education. Given the climate crisis stresses we are all suffering, particularly our youth, we've just initiated the Climate Action Club, an after-school program for middle schoolers that meets Fridays from four to six PM. Since its inception on October 29th, we've held our first two meetings at the Hefner Rec Center Building, a well-located place for local kids and an appropriate space for making art with easy-to-set-up tables and chairs, sink and ventilation. With the help of Carpe Diem Arts, and despite a short lead time to publicize the seventeen, the program, seventeen middle schoolers initially registered. Participants must be vaccinated and masked. The need and desire among young people for a safe place to talk, make art, and figure out how they can act upon the climate crisis is urgent and immeasurable. The bad. Kids are worried, here are some of the comments they wrote during our first meeting. It's us who's going to perish. The planet is the world, the only one with the people you The planet is the world, the only one with the people you love. There's not much hope for Earth, but maybe we can do better in our next planet. I believe that there are so many amazing wonders on the earth that need to be protected. I want to learn what I and the average person can do to help with the climate change issue and that could make significant changes." The actionable. "We, the club organizers, are grateful to have been able to use the Hefner Rec Center building at no cost for the first three meetings. After that, it will cost the club $70 to rent the space for each two-hour session. We would like to invite other local artists and provide proper supplies for kids' future projects. To keep club costs affordable, particularly for students from limited-income households, what would help this endeavor is for the city to make the Hefner Center available at no cost beyond this Friday when we would otherwise need to collect sufficient funds for its rental. We welcome more participants who can easily register at www.carpedmarts.org. On behalf of the club's organizers, I'd like to thank members of the city council for considering our request. Thank you so much."
Thank you, Herman. And can you email us that request, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next is Mr. Damon Brooks speaking tonight.
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to say, um, thank you all for having me. I'm a student of the University of Maryland. I'm a Tacoma Park native and it's crazy to see that some of these issues are still arising, like especially like the bike path. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for responding to my email and it's good to finally hear about Tacoma Park, you know, since I haven't been there so long. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. And then did Mary Jane Machuie, Ms. Machuie, join us this evening?
No, I'm afraid it didn't work. We had technical problems tonight.
Okay. Great. All right. I believe those are all the public comments for this evening. We will now move on to council comments. Do I see any council comments? Councilmember Smith.
I would just like to say, I want to thank the Ward 5 residents for their remarks this evening. I want to go on record and say that I support Ms. Harmon's request to have a nominal, if not, you know, zero fee to continue using Hefner, especially during the ongoing pandemic. It's important for young people to get involved. Climate change is probably the biggest threat to not just here, our country, but the world. And it would be great to see more young people come out and talk about this issue. So if there's any way that we can facilitate Ms. Harmon and her organization to use the center for maybe a dollar a year or something, we'd support that. And I want to also thank Ms. Campbell for coming out to talk about her support of the window guards legislation. That was very, very important and she was a huge advocate in getting that bill forward.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilwoman Sirci.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all to everyone that came out and provided comments from our city employees to also providing helpful feedback to the councils. We're considering what has been a very long conversation and very long-steady conversation around council compensation. So I do have a couple of updates. One on Saturday, I hope folks can join us. There's going to be a series of ribbon cuttings. The mayor will be there for a number of businesses that are in Ward 6 and also in Old Town. So I do want to read off the names of the number of wonderful Ward 6 businesses that have opened during the pandemic. So of course, we're going to start with the Brazilian Bakery at 10 a.m., so please come hungry. AG Healthcare, World Fashion, we have Kids and Family Dental, too. Mom and Pop Smoke and Vape Shop, Sugar Braids, Becky's Hair Salon, and Kobe Japan Hibachi and Sushi, which I have been dying to go to. So I am looking forward to getting Hibachi. And I want to go through the other businesses as well. Canopy Family Care, Lifetime Financial, New Dawn Acupuncture, The Zone Reflexology, Integro Plant Design and Digital Inc. There's also going to be Carpe DM Pizzeria, The Fufilery, and Duck Tattoo, as well as the Loft Collective, Main Street Pearl and Azalea City Nails, which is also a place that is on my list to get to this weekend. So I do want to encourage everyone to come out. We will start making the rounds at 10 a.m., but also if you're not able to come to the ribbon cuttings, just please patron the businesses that have opened up during the pandemic. They can definitely appreciate all of our support. Another quick reminder, Farmer's Market, we have two more Wednesdays. So if you are thinking about your Thanksgiving dinner or lack thereof, I may have a salad because I'm just being a little lazy this Thanksgiving. But if you are thinking about cooking, please take a trip down to Am Street on Wednesdays and pick up fresh fruits and vegetables from the Farmer's Market. Another quick announcement. First, I want to thank, again, I can't stress enough my appreciation to all of those residents that dedicated their time to volunteer for the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force and all of the recommendations that you all have made. Also want to thank city staff, the chief, city manager, and all of those who have spent time going through the various recommendations and identifying things that the city is doing and things that we could do more of. I do just want to kind of come back and talk about amongst the council and I want to appreciate those council members that have already shared ideas around identifying a path forward for the council to start making, taking an approach, a comprehensive approach to dissecting the various recommendations that were included in the report and how we may be able to lump some of those things together. I know that I have a couple of ideas around ways we can facilitate conversations or continue conversations around community engagement and education, new programs that may need to be created, council advocacy that may have to involve, you know, engaging with our county colleagues as well as school representatives, having and perhaps bringing in additional resources and experts to talk about policing policies and recommendations. And we'll also hear later about steps that are being taken and we've already heard about some of the steps that are being taken around city staff, organizational structure and training, which also was a common theme in some of the recommendations that were noted. So I just wanted to thank everyone for the work that's been done thus far. I consider this to be a marathon, not a sprint, and definitely look forward to us coming together as a council as we are starting to work through an approach for addressing the recommendations that are in the report. And that is all I have. So thank you all so much.
Great. Councilwoman Costa.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to, first of all, echo thanks to all the public commenters. It's always very helpful to hear from the public and appreciate when we have public comments and a number of them as well, rather than just one or two. I also plan to be at the ribbon cuttings this weekend. There is, one of the businesses is in the junction, which is in Ward 3, and obviously Ward 3 also abuts many of the businesses in Old Town as well, but also excited about the openings out in Ward 6, too. I just want to remind people a number of areas in Ward 3 that have normal trash pickup tomorrow, that that will not be happening tomorrow because of the holiday. It will be happening on Friday morning. So if you are listening now, please don't put your trash out until tomorrow evening. Just two other quick things. One is, we had a meeting yesterday with the State Highway Administration and went through a number of important issues in the city. If residents haven't seen that, there is video of that that you can watch. And I also sent out some summary comments about some of the areas in Ward 3 that are impacted in my weekly email earlier today. I particularly wanted to flag for the intersection at Lincoln and Carroll, which is an ongoing issue and I think will require some ongoing advocacy on our part to seek some solutions. And it sounded like there might be some potential to explore turn restrictions at that intersection with SHA. So to kind of help kickstart that a little bit, I would like to organize a neighborhood meeting just to sort of begin to tease out what people's opinions are on that and any issues people might be concerned about or kind of flow issues you might experience if there were turn restrictions put on. So I'll be sending out some information about that soon, but I'm aiming for next Thursday. I believe it's the 18th. So I'll share some information on that if anyone's available. If not, you can send me comments and concerns as well. And then finally, just wanted to flag that starting next week, early in the week, and then going through the week is the National League of Cities City Summit, which is happening virtually this year. And I will be participating in a number of the sessions and I believe a number of my colleagues will as well. So we'll hopefully have some good tips and information and ideas to bring back from that as well next week and the week after. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kover.
I see Ms. Machuie's on the screen.
I was going to do council comments and then ask Ms. Machuie. So I thought it would be better to do all council comments.
Thank you.
I'm on it.
Okay, sorry. Thank you to the speakers, in particular on the council compensation. We'll be talking about all those issues momentarily. So I appreciate all the comments. I have a medium-sized list. I'll try to speak quickly. Recently, we approved a resolution recognizing the work that's being done by the Chesapeake Climate Action Network, CCAN, as they're known, as they're known as, on the invasive vine removal work that they're sponsoring here in Tacoma Park. And after we adopted the resolution, I thought, ah, I better do this. So I signed up and went on Saturday and I just want to suggest to those who are inclined, it was a really fun, interesting thing. Admittedly, it was a, the weather was nice. So that probably made it easier and I probably went on some sort of cliff areas in Sligo Creek that were, maybe I shouldn't have, but it all worked out and got to help save a bunch of trees. It was a fun thing. So if you just go to the CCAN website and you can sign up and they explain exactly, you can explain it all, bring your own gloves if you have them, et cetera. Secondly, I was at Ace Hardware today and I go to Ace Hardware a lot, so that wasn't unusual. But I was asked to drop by by the manager because Ace is doing something interesting. The whole Ace, National Ace is a cooperative and then the local stores or franchises. And in the case of our local store, they're part of a group that has about 13 stores. And the name of the group is called, believe it or not, A Few Cool Hardware Stores. And that includes ours in Old Town, also Stroh Snyder's and Frager's on Capitol Hill, which people, whoever live down there will remember is a great place. And some in Baltimore, elsewhere in DC, et cetera. And the reason they invited me over was they're in the process and it will take a year, two or three, to switch over to an employee stock ownership plan model, which means that the employees will be owning the store ultimately. And so I think that's, and that's true of all 13 of the stores in this group. So it was a great opportunity. They wanted me to come by and hear about that. And then they made me mix up some paint and took a picture of that. So it looked like I knew what I was doing. But I would encourage, I know people already go there a lot anyway, but please do go. And they did make the point that it's better to shop there than through Amazon, et cetera. A few other things. On Tuesday, the 16th, I'm doing office hours. You can drop by to talk about any issue from noon to 2 p.m. I'll be sitting in the public section of the Royal Avenue Streetery. It's really cold. If you're willing, we could go inside. So Tuesday, the 16th, noon to 2. Then we did have the big State Highway Meeting recently and we went over many, many of the safety concerns that people have raised over the years. And some of these have already been works for a while. In Ward 1, heavily involving Philadelphia Avenue, also some in Piney Branch and elsewhere. And I'm not going to go through them all now because it would take a long time, but I thought it was positive. I appreciate Public Works and the mayor for setting that up. And I'll circulate something separately to residents with some of the specific details. Two other things. We've talked about this before and I'm not sure what the answer is, but the city newsletters don't seem to come as early in the month as they used to. And so I got mine today. People told me about this before. I know it's posted online, so it's not as if it's unavailable. But some of the events that were announced had already passed. So there may be something concerning the postal service here. And then, so if the staff could look into that, I'd appreciate it. And then on the postal service, I did have the opportunity last week. Jamie Raskin organized a meeting with the postal service and I was able to go to it. And concerns were expressed about the importance of having better service and the senior postal service folks we met with it. One of the Silver Spring offices did agree and they covered the region. It wasn't just that, their office. And they committed to trying to do better, better job. And everybody said, any individual problem that you have, send it to Congressman Raskin's office. That's the way the postal service wants to hear from us. And the more things you can do, the better. So I actually, in the past three days, I had two odd things happen with my mail. And I sent one of those to the postal service and I'm going to send the second one shortly. So if anyone's not sure how to get in touch with Jamie's office, who to contact there, let me know and we can continue on with that. So thank you.
Councilman Deval.
Yeah, I was just about to write that down about the post office. So thank you. Couple of quick things. So I'll also be going to the National League of Cities, going to the National League of Cities meetings next week. And the Climate and Energy Meeting is on Monday. So for folks who are interested in that topic, there'll be, I'm sure, a lot to report. There's also a regional council of governments climate meeting, the climate committees meeting on Wednesday. So again, people who are interested in that, watch my newsletter or just get in touch with me about what's going on at the regional and national level on those issues. And I, I wasn't going to bring up the State Highway Meeting, but I feel now compelled to say that the other agreement about a meeting coming out of that was a meeting in January with SHA to talk specifically about the options for the Ethan Allen and Elm Avenue intersections. So stay tuned for date, time on an agenda on that. When we get that going, we'll, you should let everybody know. And I think that's it. Thank you.
I think everybody has said everything. I will just note that the itinerary for the ribbon cuttings on November 13th, on Saturday, we do start with the Brazilian Bakery. And then we do end up at Kobe for lunchtime. So we are actually there for an extended period of time of people. And I believe the whole schedule is on the Tacoma Main Street Old Town Business Association's website, if people want to check that out. And also I just want to say that we have, I think it's over 12 businesses. We're doing ribbon cuttings. And these are businesses that have opened since COVID hit our community. And I just want to say the reason that we've been able to do this is because of the amazing work of our Housing and Community Development Office. You know, the city committed funds right away to provide grants to small businesses. But it was really the work of our staff in that department to help many of these small businesses, you know, get open, start, you know, reaching out to people. And so just want to say thank you to all their work during the pandemic and before. All right, Ms. Machuie, you've joined us. We could do, we finished with public comments, but we'll come back. I know you had some technical difficulties if you want to do your public comments now. I think you're muted. Let's see, can we, can we manually unmute Ms. Machuie? No, we're not. All right, why don't we see if the city clerk can help Ms. Mchewie, and we'll go to the city manager comments.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Great. So city manager comments, you. That's you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. First, I just want to acknowledge, I believe it was last council meeting, majority of council, there was a consensus for staff to look at addressing mental health in our community, put together a proposal for council. This evening, I sent some information to council, but I just want to let you know that we are continuing to evaluate and analyze what a two-year pilot will look like for our residents until the county can increase resources necessary to address the needs in the community. Over the next several weeks, staff and particularly our police department staff is fleshing out our proposal a little bit. And that proposal is going to need to have critical stakeholder involvement and engagement. And the critical steps that we're working on is understanding the D20 priority. Some of that we'll hear on the first, when the joint meeting happens. But there may be some other outreach that we need to do to D20 membership. And then continuing to work with the area media, the area public schools principals. They do have a mental health outreach initiative, and we're trying to understand what their initiative is. And we've been meeting with some other public health professionals in the area, looking at mental health to understand what partnerships could be advanced in this, in this community, and what models is the best model to provide to Tacoma Park residents. And so more to come on that, and we will definitely keep you all in the loop. But just wanted to give you an update and follow up from last week. The other updates that I have, it was referenced earlier, tomorrow, the city facilities will be closed for Veterans Day. The community center and recreation center will offer before care and after care tomorrow. And we have a policy when Montgomery County Schools is open, before care and after care are open as well. And morning care, seven to nine, and after care, 3:30 to 6:30. And then just again, no trash collection tomorrow. Trash will be collected Friday, November 12th. And as always, Tacoma Park, men and women are available for any emergencies 24/7. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. And also thank you for the update on the work that's being done on mental health services. I, you may not have seen it in your email yet today, because, but I was at the CAG board meeting, and Supervisor Bailey on the Prince Williams County Board of Supervisors presented their proposal that they're working on a crisis receiving center. It was really interesting proposal. She's gonna send me more information. It's probably a bit bigger than what we need in the city, but the, the idea is to have a facility where people are able to go who are in crisis or if, and have beds there available if needed, or to have some kind of just sort of drop-in services. So it looked like a very interesting model to consider, particularly given the hospitals move and everything. So that's in your inbox, probably with lots of other emails you have today. And I emailed with Supervisor Bailey after the meeting, and she's gonna send us some more information. And then we do have the follow-up meeting next week with Adventist Healthcare as well. So more to come on all of that. Ms. Mchewie, are you able to unmute now?
I don't know.
Yes, we can hear you. Yep, you're good to go. Yep.
Oh, my God. I can't see you. I'm just having problems with my iMac. I was using it as an iPad with the touchscreen. I kept touching it unmute, and of course, it didn't work. I have to have a cursor because this is an old iMac. So I'm trying to go between two computers, and I'm not good at it. And I'm still, I'm trying to, just gonna say that, I guess you already announced that it's Native American Heritage Month this month. And I just want to say, please, get an ADU for my son. It's really, really stressful situation. I just, I don't know how much longer I can take it. And it's very stressful. Please, please, please. And also, please give reparations to black residents who are lower income, like under $60,000 a year. Please. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Ms. Mchewie. Great. I think that we don't have, that takes us to our voting session. The first item we have is a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of a loader for Public Works. I see our Director of Public Works is here. Ms. Brayley, do you have anything specific to tell us about this exciting purchase?
Yeah, well, this is a planned purchase. It's a replacement for our existing loader. It has been on the schedule for replacement for several years. It's a 2007, so it has now exceeded its useful life by several years, and it's in need of replacement. We're able to purchase a replacement off the Sourcewell Act at a 41% reduction over list price. And the vendor that we've negotiated the price with also will do a purchase of our existing equipment as a further cost reduction. So the final cost is about $131,113, well below the amount that we have budgeted in the equipment replacement reserve for this item. It's a very needed and useful piece of equipment. We use it for loading, things like salt, sand. We use it extensively with our leaf grinding operation, and it's an essential piece of equipment that we have in our fleet. I think that's about it.
Does anyone have any specific questions for Ms. Breakaway, Councilmember Dibala?
This is not necessarily a question, it's a comment. So in many other city vehicle purchases, we've discussed whether an electric vehicle is available. I have not heard of an electric vehicle loader being in development, let alone commercially available. But I did think you might comment on the fuel use of the new loader.
Sure, yeah, there is no.
Point of view.
Yeah, there is no current EV option for, for the loader at this time. We currently have and will continue to use a diesel-fueled piece of equipment. That said, the city has for many, many years done a biodiesel mix for our diesel. So it's 20% soy and 80% regular diesel, with the exception of winter months where we go to a 95.5%. So we're putting as much as we can for a cleaner fuel. But this will be a piece of equipment that we will have for the next 10 to 12 years. Hopefully, within that timeframe, technology continues to advance, and we can look at other greener options.
Terrific. And just so our council knows, as Ms. Brayley said, this is coming in under our budgeted, what we have budgeted for the replacement, which was we had budgeted $200,000. So thank you for getting us a deal on that. So I'll ask if someone would like to move the single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of a loader for Public Works. Councilmember Searsy moved, Councilmember Seaman second. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Searsy.
Hi.
And Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
Great. Next, we have the first reading ordinance on council compensation. And I believe we've been joined by the city attorney, and I think our HR director was also with us there. She is Ms. Smith. Thank you very much. We've had a number of work sessions on this, and the cover sheet discusses, this is, we had a compensation task force that provided us with a number of recommendations, and one of the recommendations was to increase compensation for the council in order to make it easier for people at different economic levels to participate on our city council if they wanted to. And we've had a number of work sessions with our Director of HR, as well as, a couple of weeks ago, the city council looked at a couple of different options. I know I'm gonna toss before I ask the first reading ordinance to be moved, a question to Mr. Cornbrooke's, our city attorney. I don't know if you were listening to public comments, but a, we know that this is not an increase in salary for the current sitting city council, but there was a question, is it possible to make it that the increase would only be for people who are not being reelected, but newly elected?
So.
And you may not, that's something you need to think about. This is a two reading ordinance, though.
Thank you, Mayor. So the way the charter is written, it all needs to be put in place at the same time, and it needs to be in the next, the start of the next term.
So if we were to change that, that would be a charter change.
That's correct. And, and I would leave it to others to talk about the almost practical impossibilities of trying to follow through with that suggestion. But it would seem to me that that would be very difficult to do from a very, from a practical perspective.
All right, we someone like to move the first reading ordinance on council compensation. Councilmember Siemens moved, Councilmember Kovar second. Any questions, comments?
I just have one question. I thought we were going to eliminate in the charter where it says part-time. I thought it was just gonna be neutral. That was something that was recommended by the Council Compensation Committee. Whatever happened to that proposal?
Are you referring to the benefit, the benefit piece where it speaks to part-time benefits?
No, it says that something about the council members are part-time employees or part-time members of the council. The reason, the rationale behind that was because there are people that work for the federal government, and you have to be a part-time employee if you're going to maintain your federal position. But I thought we were gonna strike that, and have it just say something neutral. Doesn't say part-time, doesn't say full-time, says you're a council member.
So I don't specifically recall seeing that as part of the recommendations, or having that be part of the conversation previously. I don't, I don't personally know that it would be problematic. I mean, it's a salary, basically a salaried position as is. So I don't, I don't personally see a problem with it. I'm not sure if the city attorney has any thoughts on it.
I have, this is the first I've heard of that issue. I'd have to get back to you on it, Councilmember Smith.
So we can bring it back before a second reading.
If I may say, I believe the principles of compensation were revised by the council. And I think that language has been removed. And if you look at the ordinance in front of you, 2.04.110, the periodic review of compensation. I think that part-time language is out, but unless I'm missing it. So you might want to take a look at that, or we can look at that for a second reading.
All right, if we can have the city attorney just look at that before a second reading. And if necessary, we can entertain an amendment. Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I also had a similar question, so it'd be great to get that answer by the next meeting. I think I have only three things, largely in response to comments that folks made earlier today, and also comments I've received over this past week from residents. On the timing, I just would like to point out that we were originally, this was originally recommended in April of 2020. And at that point, our judgment as a council was that the city's fiscal picture with the beginning of the pandemic was very uncertain, and we were just not comfortable with doing it at that point, or even considering it for that matter. So, so the timing goes kind of both ways. The, the question of, of donating or voluntarily not accepting part or all of a salary increase came up when, when we looked at the annual, tagging the annual percentage increase a couple of years ago. So this is my second point. And at that time, we asked a number of this, of similar questions. Could we codify that as an option? Could we codify some kind of segregation, separation? Could we exempt some people but not others based on income level, et cetera? And, and at that point, none of those, different city attorney, but none of those panned out. Some of us did voluntarily take it on ourselves to donate part of our increase. And I, I put that out as an option for current city council members who are, who have the luxury of being in that and privilege of being in that position that, that you could consider that. But to be able to put it in an ordinance, put it in a resolution, absence some new advice from this city attorney, my recollection is that we weren't able to make that work the last time around. So I guess.
It was the same city attorney.
Pardon?
It was the same city attorney.
It was the same, so time flies when you have a fight.
No, it's all right. Okay, so that was Seth's alter ego. It was, he's been with us through.
All right, well, then the advice presumably still stands. Because I, I wanted to ask about it, and then I thought, wait, I've asked about this before. I know the answer. Because it, it is for sure, timing-wise, it is awkward. I get that. Then the, my third point, which is a question clarifying about the health insurance benefits. I, can, can you say, Ms. Smith, what the current city employees who are part-time, I was under the impression that they also get the same level of health insurance benefit that is being considered here in this ordinance for council members?
So part-time, part-time employees, 20 hours a week, so truly part-time employees, half-time employees.
Okay, thank you for, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, because it's all, it's all prorated if they're not 20 hours a week. So half-time employees receive, again, every city employee for employee-only coverage. The city pays the premiums. For the dependent coverage, they pay 50% of the premiums, which is what council currently is at. So the new consideration is to move that from, for dependent care coverage, so spousal, children, or family coverage, to move that from 50% share to where the city pays 80%, and the employee pays 20%, or council pays 20%.
And so if a, if a city employee is 30 hours a week, it's prorated to three quarters, which is similar to what we are talking about, which is 80%, not 75%.
Um, it, yes, yes. Generally, all of it's like a six, yes.
And I, and I bet the city attorney is gonna tell me that there's no sliding scale that we could build in for council members who work a certain number of hours a week versus council members who work on average a certain other number of hours a week. We just have to pick a midpoint and go with it.
For services, the compensation needs to be the same for all of you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Sorry, couldn't unmute for a minute.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. Just a little bit of additional history. So when the council compensation committee, which is a group that's composed of city residents, and it's a new group. Each time, every four years or so, we appoint them. When we had them look at the, these issues several years ago. And the report that they issued is attached to the agenda material for this evening's discussion. One of the things that we do is to look at the resolution that charged them or given them their mission. The committees, they're looking at the compensation in the past. And it didn't really seem to capture some of what we were concerned about. And so several of us suggested, not just suggested, but proposed modifications to the resolution creating that that year's residents committee to look at the council compensation. And we asked them specifically to look into whether the level of pay does constitute a barrier to participation by some members of the community. And I think it was unsurprising that they determined that the answer to that was yes, and that was what led to their proposal for, for the higher pay and benefits. And from my perspective, just in thinking about it, I, I, I think it's very difficult for, it would be very difficult for somebody who is, say, a single parent or has a lower income job or the type of job where there's not a lot of flexibility. I know some of my colleagues do have those jobs and have had jobs without a lot of flexibility, but typically in the six years that I've been here. The council's been composed mostly of people who are retired. People who are pretty well compensated. I'll say in, in my case, I have well-compensated spouse who's now retired. Or people have flexibility in their jobs. Maybe they work as consultants or in other ways have, have some flexibility. So if you don't have any of those things and, or you're responsible for small children, I think to me, the way the job is I've felt it's, it's a full-time job. Others have maybe felt a little bit less so, but even if it's less so. It's quite unpredictable. So you can't just say, I'm always going to be available to go to my regular job on Tuesday afternoon. You might not know that things pop up. We get surprising meetings or other issues that occur. And so realistically, it's hard to contemplate serving, I think, for a lot of people in the city. And that's not some, that's not a message that we want to send. And I think we, we want to have more people who will be able to do it. And I haven't had individuals in Ward One and from other parts of the city who have told me specifically that, that they, that they feel it would be difficult or impossible for them to contemplate doing it. Now, can we guarantee that if we were to make a change like this? Then additional people would run. Of course, the answer isn't, I think, Councilmember Smith said last time we talked about, there was a, there was a moral issue. And so I, I agree with that. And I think it's something that we, we should just try to do. To, to be clear, though, it's not. This is not something that I think I need so I can get more of a salary. I'm fortunate in that I could do this for this amount or honestly for nothing, if that's, if that's what was involved. And so I am intrigued by the idea that was mentioned earlier about trying to have a bifurcated system where newly elected people, as opposed to reelected people, would get it. Because I don't want people to think we're doing this to line our own pockets. And if the answer is there has to be a charter change, now let's make a charter change. I think in the example that we're talking about from before, that was right in the middle of, of the budget and we were getting ready to finalize the budget. And there was no time to really get into any type of charter change. I, I'd like to see us consider doing that, even if we approved it now, but had to make a charter change later on. Since we're nearing the point in the year where we're going to be taking a break in terms of formal meetings. That would be okay with me because we would signal now, hey, for future potential candidates, it's going to be this higher amount. And then if we can work out the charter change, we can work it out. So I'd like us to look, look into that. But, but to me, however that piece of it turns out, I do think that this is something that we can do that would enable more people to consider participating in a way that they haven't been able to in the past. Thank you.
Councilmember Kostic.
Thank you. I have just one question and then a couple of comments. This is not, not a significant issue, but I'm just curious to the city attorney. I noticed that in the changes, the, the edits, the amendments included not, I don't know if I'm explaining this right. It feels like an hour later still. I haven't totally changed under the new time zone. So the, the first two lines of the, of the code still reference that earlier set of compensation. And when I first read it, it was confusing to me why that was still there. I'm just curious, is that do we need to have that there? Is there a reason why that hasn't been taken out?
So I'm assuming Councilmember Kostic, and if I'm understanding the question correctly, you're, you're on page two, line 75, and then again, line 84. Does that look correct?
Yes.
2.04100A and B. So one of the difficulties we have in drafting these ordinances is because we have to maintain the current compensation until the expiration of your term, and then we have to set the new compensation. So I don't want to do anything to mess with the current compensation, but I need to create an exception for the future compensation. So that's why it's set up that way.
Got it. Thank you. That's, that's helpful. I just want to kind of build on, on some of the things my colleague said earlier. I think this is an important step in terms of working towards our equity goals and enabling more people to consider running for these positions. I think the the recommendations of the council compensation task force were helpful and getting us to, to kind of think through this and what changes we needed to make. And as I said, when we discussed this before, I don't think this is the only barrier to people running for and, and holding these positions. There are clearly a number of them. I do think the, the issue that Councilmember Kovaar referenced earlier with regard to the unpredictability and kind of change in schedule is one of them. And I certainly would hope that there can be times and flexibility, and we can all recognize that we do need to be flexible to enable people to hold these positions if they cannot meet at certain times. But there, there is a challenge sort of inherent in the position related to the flexibility that's required. I also think that, you know, in terms of the, the confusion and the, the barriers to just running for, for office in general can be, can be a barrier. And I appreciated the conversation we had a little while earlier with the Board of Elections in terms of helping ameliorate some of that with some more clear information and kind of walking candidates through how to run a campaign and what is required. So I think that's helpful as well. And then, as I mentioned before, I do also think that the two-year terms is, is another issue we should take a look at, or a council should take a look at, at some point in time. Obviously, that is a, a larger undertaking in terms of changing, but I do think it does create an instability that someone who's looking for the stability of a job might, might be turned off from in terms of considering running. So I, I am, as I said, I'm, I'm going to support this. I do worry a little bit that we're, we're not going to be able to move the needle enough with the increase that we have here and without some of the other structural elements. But I do think it's an important step, and I'm hopeful that it will, it will help, you know, into the future. And we'll be able to kind of take a look as a city in terms of how this, what the impact of this has had. So I'm looking forward to that. And kind of analyzing this as well as the changes we made to the committees and seeing, you know, how the stipends there. And some of the increased and improved structures we put in place are, are effective.
Councilmember Kovaar, did you have a?
Yeah, there was just one other thing I meant to mention, and I brought to references made to the, the notion of term limits. And I know some people support them and some don't. I, I don't have the support that idea at, at any level. But I don't think that addresses what this addresses because even with term limits, you may get more opportunities for non-incoments to serve. But if the pay remains at the same level, you're still making it difficult for those who are less well-off to be able to run. So people may want to have term limits separately, and, and that's, that's something that can be discussed. But I don't believe that in any way gets to this point. So I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you. And I, I just want to add as well on the health benefits. You know, I think that's something that not all council members will, you know, take advantage of, but having that available for members who need it, I think is also really important. It's been something that this council and prior councils, not just, you know, for city staff across the board have really put an emphasis in making sure that all of our full-time employees have access to full healthcare, including dental and vision. So you know, having a robust healthcare program, I think is really important. But just want to mention, not everybody does take advantage of that. So. All right, I think we're ready to ask somebody to move the ordinance.
It is already moved and seconded.
And we did that already. I'm sorry.
By Councilmember Siemens and second by Councilmember Kovaar.
Thank you very much to the state clerk. I, I forgot we did that already. All right, then we are just going to call the vote then.
Yeah, before we vote, I just mentioned one other thing. I'm, I'm sorry to be raising my hand yet again, but I'm, I'm supportive of this and I vote for it, but I, I would like to ask if we, if we can get some feedback on this other question before the final vote, which would happen.
On what? Charter change?
Or, or what would be involved in?
Charter change involves, is, is, we can discuss that, but it's a pretty involved.
Right, but I think it would be helpful.
Process. I, I think the last time we changed our charter, though, I can be corrected, is when we moved our voting to be in sync. It would be, would it be that same process, which we'd have to look at the number of days. So part of this would be there needs to be 60 or 90 days in between certain things. So I, I think we need to go back and look. A charter change generally takes us a bit of time.
Yeah, I, I recognize that that can't be done tonight, but it would be nice to have the, or helpful, not nice, helpful to have the explanation of that before the final vote next week. That, that's all I'm saying. Of what would be involved.
Can we vote now? Good, all right.
Councilmember Kovaar.
Hi.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, so two things before a second reading, how long it takes us, the process for a charter change and whether or not we need to strike part-time. And I'll come back for a second reading next week. Next, we have the, thank you to the city attorney for joining us. Next, we have the first reading ordinance amending the code to require installation and maintenance of window guards in certain rental houses. Oh, I believe the city attorney is going to stay with us for that one as well. Let's see, Mr. Cross, am I turning this over to you since you're with us or?
Sure.
Yeah.
We have a quick introduction. So since 2019, two Tacoma Park children have fallen from windows in multifamily rental facilities with one child treachery passing away in October 2020. The purpose of this legislation is to prevent another tragedy from occurring in Tacoma Park by requiring the installation of window guards on all windows above the ground floor in multifamily rental facilities. Window guards are physical barriers or limiting devices attached to a window to prevent occupants from falling out of the windows, which will reduce the risk of injury or death associated with accidental falls from windows.
Thank you. You know, and I do want to say thank you to Councilmember Smith for his work on this at the county level. And as, and Ms. Campbell, who was here earlier with us during public comments. Would someone like to, Councilmember Smith, would you like to move the ordinance?
Someone.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilwoman DiBala? Any questions or? Councilwoman Circe.
Real quick for Director Cross. So are we, in terms of ground floor, is there a specific height restriction for what we would consider to be ground?
That is not contemplated in legislation, but in regulations, we can, we can determine that. But right now, it says anything that's above the basement or ground floor, which typically is the first floor.
Yeah, it, it might be great for us to just as we're thinking about the regulations, kind of keep in mind height of ground floors because they're not always on ground. And especially if the first floor is considered above like a lobby or something like that. Thank you.
Got it.
Great, Councilmember DiBala.
Yeah, I have two questions, one about the ordinance and one about how to implement it. So I'm not there's a lot here. I'm not seeing a size like a number of apartments jumping out at me. So is this based on building height and not on number of units?
Yeah, so the legislation says multifamily, so more than one, single-family homes and ADUs would not be included.
But theoretically, two families, if there's a again, ground, whatever ground is, and then some above it. Okay. So then that leads to my second question, which is about implementing this. As with so many multifamily issues in Tacoma Park, it's relatively easy to reach the owners of the bigger buildings. It gets tougher as the buildings get smaller. So maybe you can come back next week. This is a two-vote, two-reading, two-vote ordinance. And just give us a little preview of how the city is going to go about reaching out to the different building owners to work on implementing this. And while we're at it, again, long, lot, lot of ordinance here, just say for, for us, when this takes effect and when landlords would be expected to have started complying. That might be a city attorney question.
So on the, the latter part of it, it is currently, the way the ordinance is written, it is currently scheduled to go into effect on January 1st of next year to be consistent with the county.
Okay.
But, and I, and this is where Director Cross may have to come in. It's my understanding, the county still has not issued its regulations despite, I believe, promising them in early November. And we would want to have those in hand and have, take a look at them, review them and figure out how the city would want to implement them. Keeping in mind that the county is going to be involved in enforcement in the city as well. So.
Yeah. So the effective date, January, to match the county, the implementation date to be determined based on the county timing.
I'll, I'll defer to Director Cross and, and the manager on that piece of it. But there's, from my perspective, there's going to have to be some break-in period, if you will. Lack of.
Right. Right. And the, the county legislation was passed in the spring of this year, so they've had more months.
They've had a lot, a lot of lead time.
Right. So we, we so it's possible we can consider it later. Going into effect date.
Okay, so that may be something you can come back with some more next week. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith, you have your hand up.
I just want to thank staff for bringing this board. I think this is a really powerful piece of legislation. I will actually save people's lives. I want to thank council. I wanna thank Council President Tom Hooker for leading the way on the county and council to, to get this piece of legislation passed and the county executive for signing it. Mr. Cross, can you work with the county and see about a bulk buy program, see if that's possible? I, I, you know, I think that's an excellent idea that Ms. Campbell put forward, you know. I read some of the work that was done in New York City and, and they were able to figure out how to work with landlords and, and put together a bulk buy per purchase that really drove down the cost of the window guards. And I think that, that would be something we could do here in Montgomery County. But I'll, I'll just close with, I wanna, once again, thank Ms. Campbell for her help and all the other advocates that worked on moving this piece of legislation. It's, it's, it's really important. And Mr. Fox, thank you for helping to, to bring it before the council.
Great, seeing no other hands up, we will call the vote on this.
Councilmember Kobar.
Hi.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe. Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Next, we have a first reading ordinance warning contract for organizational workforce needs and risk assessment study services. Let's see, am I turning this over to Ms. Smith or?
I will, yep, I will kick it off.
Great.
Um, as you said, there's two RFPs that were released in September, the first that we're considering presenting for you tonight is the organizational workforce needs and risk assessment study. It was released, and the RFPs were released September 29th, and we got proposals received the end of October. Those four firms responded to this proposal. Interviews were completed by staff, and the selected firm was Matrix Consulting Group. They're a nationwide firm. My understanding is they've done about ninety organizational workforce studies, including the city of Greenbelt. And I am going to turn it over now to Alan Pennington, who is the Vice President of Matrix Consulting Group, to go over the proposal, and then we can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Tracy, and thank you for having me here this evening. I do have a brief presentation, just to quickly go through our proposal and give you a high-level overview, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. All right. Should look familiar. So I wanted to just take a minute to talk a little bit about who we are as a firm, to give you a little bit of background. We are a firm dedicated to providing, to providing management consulting to the public sector only. Ninety, ninety-five percent of our clients on an annual basis are cities and counties. The rest of them are universities, special districts, and state agencies. And we've been doing this since 2002, and, and as you heard, since that time, we've done ninety organization-wide studies, similar to the scope of work that you put forth in your RFP. And in addition to that, we've done approximately thirteen hundred individual departmental studies, where rather than looking at an organization at one time, we do a more in-depth dive on a department-by-department basis. And, and that experience brings to our team and our firm a really detailed and experienced set of analysts and consultants that I'll talk about. One of the things we like to highlight in our, regarding our approach is we are very fact-based. We really like to understand how each entity, and in this case Tacoma Park operates, why you're operating that way, what makes you unique, what are the services that you are trying to provide to your residents and at what service levels? So that we're giving you a report that is not just useful, but is really tailored to address the specific concerns that your organization may be facing and help you develop a stronger and more sustainable organization moving forward. And we really pride ourselves on the level of implementation. When we go back and talk to our prior clients, generally, well over eighty-five percent of the recommendations have been implemented. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on our project team, because you, you have all of our detailed resumes in the proposal. But I just wanted to highlight that we're, we're bringing to this engagement eight individuals that would be working on this, some on-site, some behind the scenes. But it's a very senior consulting team, and we've worked together on dozens of studies as a team. And I think that, that is really important. And we have subject matter experts, we have individuals who specialize in planning and community development, others who specialize in public works, parks and rec, policing. So they're not only strong consultants, but they're strong technical experts and subject matter experts to help demonstrate and their understanding of your organization and the operational challenges that you face. The other unique aspect of our team is approximately half of them, prior to having a career in consulting, were local government executives, department heads, assistant city managers in similar positions. As you heard a little bit about our experience, I just wanted to highlight some of our recent organization-wide studies in the last eight to ten years are listed here, and, and they span the country, large, small, and everything in between. Probably, on average, our citywide studies are generally in organizational sizes more comparable to yours than larger, but we've done much larger organizations also. But if we look at the number of them we've done, they probably have been at the forty thousand or, or smaller population. And we recently have started up a townwide study in Coventry, Rhode Island, which also includes school operation assessment. Real quick overview of our methodology and our approach. As I mentioned, it's very much a fact-based approach. It's understanding who you are, why you are, and what you wanna be. And so we do that through intensive data collection and document reviews to understand your environment. But also, we get input from a variety of stakeholders, and that would include yourselves as council members. We like to offer an interview with you at the very start of the study to understand your concerns, what you think is operating well, things, questions you wanna make sure are answered through this study and get any input you'd like to share with us. We do detailed staff interviews, so we interview staff in every department at different levels within the department. We have a confidential employee survey, so that every employee of your organization, even though they may not be individually interviewed, has an opportunity for direct input to our consulting team. We like to make an offer to meet with union representatives to understand their concerns or issues as another key stakeholder. And then the other in, internal input mechanism here would be the SWAC analysis, which was a specific scope of the RFP. We use all of that data input and, and interviews and data that we compile and review from you to do an analysis of staffing. And really, when we're looking at staffing, it's not based upon benchmarks with other communities. It's based upon what's the workload for your organization by functional area? What are the standards that you'd like to have in each of those service areas? And then what are the resources that you need in order to hit that service level standard? As elected officials, you get to set policy regarding what services and at what level they're provided. We wanna help you understand what resources and staffing are required to hit that. And then we, when we do the report, we, we provide a comprehensive implementation guide that you can use. Staff can use it to monitor progress and to sort of lay out a, a multi-year plan for making those improvements. But you can also use it to see how well progress is being made in implementing those recommendations that you've approved. Real quickly, a quick overview of our task plan. We, we basically do this in, in five unique steps. The first one, we call a current status assessment. That is nothing more than getting smart about your organization. This is where we do most of our onsite time, our staff interviews, our data collection, understanding your current organization. The second task would be an employee survey. As I mentioned, we feel that's really important. Nobody has a greater stake in the organization than the employees, and we wanna understand what are their concerns or perceptions regarding staffing, operational practices, what technology, what are their thoughts on improvement opportunities or challenges that are impacting their ability to provide service at the level or, or the efficiency level that they would like? Task three starts to become our fir-, it's still data collection, but it's our first semi-analytical phase. So we're comparing each of your departmental operations to best practices or industry standards relevant to them. It's where we look at your organizational structure and major service approaches and compare that to other organizations to say, are you structured and operating, you know, well and compared to other high-performing organizations? And this is where we would do the SWAC assessment to identify any factors, internal or external, that are impacting your operations. Task four, then, is really purely our analytical effort. That's where we are doing the analysis to develop the recommendations for operational changes, staffing level changes, and that could be number of positions, types of positions, of a whole, a whole variety of things there. Looking at the overall organizational structure, spans of control for supervisors, all of those typical things that you look at for organizational and staffing assessments. And then we do the draft and final report, and we provide a full draft report to the city for review and comment. We take that feedback, review it, make any appropriate changes and, and develop the final report, which we assume we would probably be presenting back to you in, in a public meeting if you, if you so chose. We've proposed to do this over a fourteen-week time period, so it's, I wouldn't call it aggressive, but that's, I think, a really good time period. It keeps the focus on the study. We know this is important to your organization, and you want results from it as soon as you can. But it provides enough time for us to do a thorough evaluation, but also for staff to review our interim deliverables, because at the end of each task, we have an interim deliverable we provide to them, which we want their thoughtful review and feedback on. So we found this fourteen-week, anywhere from twelve to sixteen, is really sort of that sweet spot. It keeps the pressure on, the importance of it, but it gives everyone plenty of time, because we understand your staff has other work to get done while this study may be ongoing, so we, we wanna keep that in mind also. So real quickly, the last slide is why us, what makes us the right partner for you? And I think it is because we, we view our clients as partners. We're here to help you end up in a better place than you are now. But I think some things that really distinguish us is the depth of our knowledge functionally in local government, our experience in conducting this nationally, so we can bring in a lot of different perspectives on different approaches or alternative approaches that we have seen work and work well. A fact-based approach that gives you in, in-depth insights into the changes that are needed. We have some really well-established and proven tools for developing workload and staffing analysis that really focuses on, you know, efficient delivery of services, but ensuring that you are staffed at a level to provide the services that you want. And an ongoing collaboration. This is something we're doing with the, with the city, not to the city, and, and we really wanna partner with them through this. So with that, we're excited to, about the potential to work with you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about our firm experience, background, or anything you'd like to know.
Great, thank you very much for that presentation. Just to let folks know, that is also available up on the city website on our agenda page, in case you wanna go back and review it. See if any of the city council members have any questions. See, I have Councilmember Smith and then Kobar.
I just wanna say that I, I support this one hundred percent. You know, it's, it's almost mind-boggling. We haven't done this before now. You know, I, I appreciate the presentation. So getting, you know, to your experience, what are some, I'll take three, are the biggest things that you see when you review an organization of positives, a couple negatives, that they need to change? Is it either staffing, is it rearranging staffing? Is it, do you guys get into taxes, tax level? Is that, you know, is it, do you look at, is it appropriate tax level to run an organization? Do you do performance on, where do you see the tax base five years, ten years, fifteen years from now? Just, just, you know, a, a little overview of what you guys are seeing out in the marketplace.
Sure, so i- it's a pretty comprehensive look at your operations, staffing, resources, and, and processes. And, and the things we see in each organization really vary depending upon that organization. Sometimes we'll come in and we'll find an organization is really deficient in their technology. So I won't use a name, but we have a recent client based in Silicon Valley, you know, the hub of technology. And the biggest issue we found was they had, you know, twenty-year-old technology they were trying to operate their local government with. That was the, the biggest issue. They had the number of staff they needed, but they weren't efficient because of the, the technology resources. In other cases, we've gone in and we found out the service levels were set so high, and the staffing allocations were so low, that there was no way staff could effectively hit the target that had been set for them. And so the recommendation there was to the elected officials, you either need to change your service level expectation or provide additional resources. Either one is a, a policy decision you get to make, but you can't, you can't expect the staff to perform at that level. Other times, we may come in and find there's a deficiency in training in some area, and, and the staff just don't have the, the upgraded skills and the ongoing training that they need. So we're looking at all of those type of things. The only thing that you mentioned that is, I would say, a little bit outside of what the scope of the work was as written in the RFP was the, the detailed pro forma on the revenue and tax base to, to your residents. Having said that, within some of those operational areas, we do look at things. For example, if you look at the community development operation, if we were to review their operations and say, you're only recovering thirty percent of your costs for providing development review, the industry standard is that's usually self-sufficient, we're gonna raise that as an issue. So you know, hey, there's an opportunity for us to address this and generate additional revenue to support the services we're providing.
And if I can just jump, jump in there, Councilmember Smith, to your question that Alan couldn't respond to as relates to tax revenue, that will come in to play when we look at next year possibly, rolling on the RFP for the five-year financial forecast, where we can do a deeper dive into that.
This is an excellent start.
Hey, Councilmember Kobar.
Thanks. If, this is really a question for our staff, not, not for Mr. Pennington. I appreciate the presentation. But I think if I understood correctly, this wasn't originally, excuse me, originally in our budget. And so if the staff could just explain sort of how it emerged and how it came about and what the explanation for all of that is, that would be helpful, if you don't mind.
Councilmember Kobar is, is originally was, was not in our budget, but this is something that I felt that needed to be done, is something that I've talked with you and your colleagues, and since I came on board, that we needed to do to have a better understanding of the organization, what is needed from a staffing level as policy leaders for you all to know. Instead of us cherry picking, saying that we need certain positions, we need an assessment to look at and see what do we truly need and do a value add, if that's the case. But we needed a third party to come in and assess and tell us where the gaps exist in the organization. And so when we went through that, we've had conversations on our leadership team throughout the organization. It was apparent that we needed this assessment sooner than later. And so when we looked at the budget, what we're looking at in the ordinance before you tonight, and it will be back next week, is to increase the city administration contracts account line with seventy-eight thousand five hundred with the use of some of the fund balance to be able to pull over, to be able to use for this contract.
So presumably, it takes fourteen months. Excuse me, that means the results or the recommendations in the report are available in time, not for the budget we'll be working on in already a few months from now, but the next one. already a few months from now, but the next one, right?
The, the, the goal, the goal is, once, once it is formally adopted by you at council, at the second reading, we'll, we'll start negotiations with Matrix. And thereafter, they, they would start the work with the goal and hope is to be done by around March 14th. Right in time for the city manager's recommended budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes, thank you. And that's March of
2022.
20, thank you. Yeah. Wait, hold it. March of 2022 is not 14 months from now. So
14 weeks.
Yeah, that's, that's why, because I thought it was 14 weeks. Okay. Thank you. But that actually wasn't my question. So I'm hearing that there are essentially two clients here. One is the city management and the other is the city council. Is that pretty much correct? Rather than it being all the city manager as the client.
So, so the role of council with a organizational workforce needs assessment, it is the city and within the city, the city management and staff, we work with the consultant. But in the onset of, of the process, the consultant will have individual meetings with each member of council as well as both labor unions that we have. They will meet with them individually, gain input, survey, and then we will continue on in that process and evaluate each of the department structures, span and control and other things that Alan represented tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So that was actually, my next question was about the unions. But, but backing up a second, so I'm thinking to next March and we get some recommendations and some of them will be aimed more at the city management, the leadership team, and some of them will or will not be in depth, the city council. I'm thinking, for example, what the, what you said, the representative from Matrix said about some, some choices may come into pretty clear relief based on what the findings are. So that's one question and a related question, both I think for the matrix consulting group. How, whether and how the final fi- the findings, the final report are publicly presented so residents also can understand what some of the issues uncovered are, or whether the focus is much more internal, which would be fine with me. I just want to be clear about, is this an internal process? Or is there something in March that residents will get to, get to, to hear about, talk about? So two related questions again, I'm not sure if they're for the, for Matrix or, or for the city manager.
I, I would say for, for the second question that you asked, the report, once we have a report and it's final report, it'll be, we'll work with major consulting group and we'll have a presentation to council. So it will be public at that time. It will be posted. But it would be in congruence to what, what was discovered and uncovered through the process.
Right. Okay.
Can you read, repeat your first question again?
Maybe. Thinking too much of next year, just again, who the, who the report is, is, is aimed at?
The, the report is, is aimed at the organization itself. It's, it's not looking at whether bifurcating councils, city management and, and
Okay. All right. Yeah. I see Alan.
Yeah, it's, it's looking at the organization.
Yeah. And, and so maybe
And that's a great answer.
Yes. Sometimes our recommend, when we develop the executive summary and the list of recommendations, we, we put without a priority, a timeframe, a cost and a, a lead responsibility. So if it's something that is administrative and within the city manager's role, you know, it's him or his department heads or whoever. If it's a policy decision or, or something you, the council has to be involved in, we note that. So it's clear that, hey, staff can't go do this unless some other action is undertaken. So it makes it really clear who has to sort of drive the bus on that, if you approve that recommendation.
Well, thank you for that. I, I, I want to associate myself with council member Smith's initial comments. I, I agree. This is, this is useful. It's needed and it's amazing. We haven't done it yet. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Siri.
Well, thank you so much for this presentation. It's Alan. It's been great. I have a couple of questions. So one, can you talk a little bit more about some of the policing expertise or police structure expertise that you all have within your firm? And then two, we have a number of, of standing documents that we're trying to explore. So we have, for example, we just finished a public safety task force that had recommendations that related to quite frankly, aspects of function, org function and roles. But we also have other large strategic documents, like housing economic strategic plan documents and, you know, our climate action work. So are, are you all looking at those documents in addition to the interview? So I guess, pick which one you want to take first, like
Okay. I'll take them in the, I'll take them in the order you answer them. So I'm more likely to remember it that way. So yeah, I'd be happy to talk a little bit about our policing experience. So of the projects that we typically do, about a third of our projects are police studies in it, on an annual basis. And those are everything from general operational staffing, scheduling, deployment studies to over the last year, there have been more police reform studies because three years ago, you never saw an RFP to do a police reform study. And I, I did see the document that recently came out for Tacoma Park with the recommendations from, from your committee. And our police team did a, a study in New York, the state of New York had a regulation that every department had to develop a, a, a action plan on what they were going to do. And we worked with some communities in New York and helping them do that as well as others. So we have a real depth of knowledge in that area. I think most importantly for this study, that second piece of your question is, is spot on. And I apologize for not bringing that into my presentation. In addition to our interviews, one of the questions we will talk with each department head and staff about is what are these plans? Strategic efforts, goals that have, that you have? And, and what are the impacts on the workload that you have? So if, if you have, it's great to have all these planning documents, but if, if the staff isn't set up structurally or with the right number of people to accomplish them, what we're going to try to do is pull that all in and say, look, here's your day to day workload. But here's the additional workload that these other studies, reports have put on the department. And what, what impact on staffing would that have? And where it's possible, we would try to tie that to the staffing requirements or the resource requirements. If it's in addition because of a report, you know, we'll try to tie it to that so that you can understand what's driving the staffing need, because I think this is the opportunity to take that holistic look. If you've done all these great studies, you've got these great plans. Can you actually implement them? And, and is it reasonable to resource yourself at a level to do that? Do you need to recalibrate and say, maybe we need to change the timeframes or maybe this needs to get greater priority and we have to add a staff member? That's what we're hoping to help you put your arms around.
Great. Thank you. And, and again, I just, I want to align myself with my colleagues in support of this work because I think we as a city, we do a great job coming up with big initiatives. And just, you know, the pandemic in and of itself is a huge initiative and we have a lot of things going on. So I think having some outside support to help us with prioritizing and identifying what our, our staffing needs are and where the gaps are, I think are, is going to be the key to making sure that we're successful in all of these different activities we have ongoing right now. So thank you for bearing with us at almost 10 o'clock.
No worries.
I just have one other question to kind of tag him on to councilwoman Siri's question. In addition to, you know, staff capacity and other issues, you know, there particularly, I'll just use the task force report as an example. There was a recommendation and councils talked about looking at our like neighborhood services division. And that's just one example. And whether or not it makes sense moving that out of the police department or keeping it there. Would, would this analysis provide input into, into that type of looking at the structure of our city government, like where departments sit and other things and whether or not it makes sense for many different reasons to move things around a bit.
Yeah, we, we could definitely weigh in on that because that's part of the overall organizational structure. So if, if looking, once we've done our initial scan and have an understanding of your organization, we're going to step back and look and say, you know, i- if, if things were grouped differently, could this function better? Would it put similar resources together? Would it develop some synergies? So I think yes, that, that's where it's important for us to understand these external recommendations that have been developed so that we can, we can take that into consideration. So I think that's, those are the type of things we'd ask people to make us aware of and or if there are just a specific question is, you know, the, we'd really like to have some input on this. We'll do our best to answer that question for you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm not seeing any other hands. So I'm going to say, let's move the first reading ordinance to warning contract for organizational workforce needs and risk assessment study services. Anybody, anybody? Councilmember Siri, move. Do I have a second? Councilmember Smith, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote.
Let's member Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siri.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Pennington. I appreciate you staying with us this evening. And I think I will now turn to the single reading ordinance awarding contract for compensation pay equity study. And I believe I'm turning it back over to Ms. Smith to talk about that as well.
Yep, absolutely. So this is the second RFP that was released at the same time. As you said, for compensation and pay equity study. And this is one that is regularly completed. On the last time it was finished, I believe was in 2019. I believe it started in 18, wrapped up in 19. And we try to do it, I believe, every three ish years. So it is due back up at this time. The RFP was released again at the same time in September. Bolton was the selected firm to present to you. You likely recognize the name as they do our actuarial services for the police pension fund. They also have a class and comp study services division. So I'm, I'm going to introduce right now Scott Schreiber, who is one of the, or a managing director for Bolton. Hopefully he is on with us.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Here I am. Yes. All right. So I have a little presentation. Recognize in the hour I will go a little fast through it. Let me get it up here. Thought I had it up. Excuse me one second. Let me make sure I can get this. Let me try this way. Let me try this way. How's that? Can we see it now? Okay, good. Well, we're excited to work with Tacoma Park. I have a brief presentation, just go over a little bit as was mentioned, you guys know the name of Bolton, but we are full service compensation, employee benefits, actuarial and investment consulting with over 40 years experience. Headquartered in Baltimore. We also have offices in Atlanta, Cincinnati, Denver, Trenton, Philadelphia, and Washington DC. Currently we have a complement over 100 staff. And I am one of the managing directors. There are several of us. There's actually two of us in the total rewards division. And so what I'd like to do is just, again, a couple slides. And of course it's not progressive. There we go. And then address any questions you may have. Typically when we come in to do a classification and compensation study, there's some key elements of the programs that we always touch on to evaluate. It's looking at the organization's pay philosophy, looking at your tidling, documentation, career pathing systems. Obviously we're going to do a lot of work as far as benchmarking your jobs in the external marketplace. We'll touch base on your classification systems, your scales, your ranges, as well as determining, you know, the actual pay within the organization and looking at equity and fairness of actual pay within the organization. Finally, we'll also look at some of the tools in regards to policies and procedures. Similar to what we just heard, we have a, a big step, phase, phases, process as well. Ours has 10, a little bit shorter time period of 12 weeks. But they start off with a project planning. Obviously we'll meet with leadership to actually finalize the project plan. Look at a data request and the material necessary to begin the project. The second step is leadership input, which time we will interview the leadership of the city as well as the council to get the input and to understand the challenges. And, you know, and develop a perspective on your, your approach to the compensation and human resources. Next step is what we call a preliminary gap analysis. That's basically looking at what you're currently doing, our understanding of where the city wants to go as far as the roles and the compensation strategy and seeing if in fact there is a gap. At this point in time, we'll do a preliminary conceptual recommendation to try to close that gap. We do a lot of work as far as job analysis is concerned. What we mean by that is understanding your jobs. We'll use your existing job content, resources of job descriptions. But we'll also supplement that with any additional questionnaires necessary to make sure we have a full understanding of what your jobs are accomplishing, their duties and their countabilities. The next step would be the, the benchmarking, in which case we actually will conduct a custom survey utilizing our municipality compensation database. We'll map your job titles to the families and career levels within the database. We'll finalize the desired survey participants in order to identify the peer organizations that we want to make sure we capture their compensation as far as the evaluation of the external competitiveness is concerned. We electronically distribute this survey. We'll monitor returns and nudge people as necessary in order to get the necessary returns from the peer organizations. And then while I analyze the market data, develop a market data assessment as far as the value of jobs. It's the regarding the market versus Tacoma Park. Next step then would be to look at your current structures, your current grading systems. Make any recommendations we have as far as changes to those structures in order to stay competitive. We'll then look at employee pay and equity, again, looking at the fairness competitiveness across the organization on an individual by individual basis. Our next phase is what we refer to as total pay delivery system. In that case, we look at how employee receives pay over time. It seems like hiring rates for new hires, promotional increases, and we'll take a good hard look at your policies within the organization as far as delivering pay to the individual. Final steps are approval and reporting. We typically do a draft report as well. Present our draft report, get the input, then a final report to the organization. Once the final approval of changes, we'll come back in then and rec, make recommendations for any updates as far as policies and guidelines are concerned. So that was very quick overview of, of the steps involved. I'll just summarize at the end that we think we're very good at taking an integrated approach and really becoming a partner of the city. we think we're very good at taking an integrated approach and really becoming a partner of the city in, in determining the necessary compensation plans and objectives to meet the needs as you go forward. So, you know, city managers, leadership, the project team in Bolton, constant conversations, constant communications as far as the, during the entire length of the project. So very quick summary given the hour. Any questions? Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Councilwoman DiBala.
Yes, and this, this might be a longer question than we have time for right now, but we've done, the city's done periodic surveys and the last couple have been done by a different firm. And how will this study, particularly given the, the nice price? How will the study integrate with the previous work that's been done? So that when we get to the actual, here's the pay scales, here's the pay tables, is what they look like, is how they might change. We have some consistency. Everybody was smiling. Who wants to answer?
Well, I can, yeah, we certainly start where we're currently at. And so that's as a result of the previous work. And to be honest with you, it's, it's, it's good to hear that you do it in the time frequency that you do every three years. So we would not expect there to be major upheaval as far as the, our deliverables back to you. In a three-year time period, you know, most of your jobs should remain the same. The question is, what's happened in the marketplace? And that's been significant of late as far as the changes in the marketplace is concerned. So we would build from where you're currently at and again, bring that three years forward into twenty-one, twenty-two. If that answers the question.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for the presentation. Just real quick, I know it's late. So these compensation stays, I guess, last two, three years. That's why we have on the books to do it every three years. How do you guys look at a situation that I guess you would term unique? With the country coming out of a pandemic, you have, you know, this huge uptick in inflation. How do you flatten that out or do you flatten that out so that it is representative of, you know, what you think you'll see in the, in, in employee compensation two, three years from now? Because I don't, you know, all the economists I've seen, no one thinks that there's going to be the same level of inflation that we're seeing right now, next year, maybe even two years from now. So how do you guys, in your model that you create, how do you keep that into, or take that into consideration?
Well, basically, our project is to bring you from three years past to today. Okay, so we're, we're actually looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe to, to reset your structure to be competitive today. Okay?
Okay.
And, and I don't have a crystal ball going out three years from now.
Right.
But that's all we're trying to do is recalibrate, reset from the eighteen project to the twenty-one project. And make sure you're competitive today relative to your peers.
Okay, thank you. And one more question. Do you guys look at how we pay employees, meaning, you know, I assume that we have a number percentage of employees that are unbanked. So do you guys look at, you know, does it make sense to actually give someone a physical check? Or should you give someone a, you know, like a debit card that is, is easier to use? Do you guys consider that? Because with a physical check, you, you know, if you take it to a payday lender, there's a large percentage that is taken out of that. So do you guys look at that? Because fintech is like taking off and that's what everyone's talking about, you know? But there still is a large percentage of people that don't do any type of banking.
Right, right. No, we do not look at that. We're more of a system, structures. You know, the organization as a whole, we don't get actually into the delivery of the paycheck. We do not.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the presentation.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. It was really helpful. We're looking forward to beginning the work with you. I think the combination of these, both of these studies, I think, are going to be really helpful in doing them at the same time. I think will also be helpful to look at them together. So I think with that, I will ask if someone will move the single reading ordinance awarding contract for compensation and pay equity study. Councilwoman Siri moved. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostic, can the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Yes. Aye.
Yes. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siri.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. That, well, isn't quite our last voting item. Our last voting item is to vote to go into a closed session and to discuss matters related to collective bargaining with Ask Me Local three-three-nine-nine. The meeting will be closed pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland General Provisions Article three dash three oh five B nine. After this closed session, we will not reconvene in the open session. Can I, may I have a motion to move this into a closed session? Councilwoman DiBala moved. Councilwoman Kostic second. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siri.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, everyone should have gotten the link to the closed meeting and we will move over to that meeting. Thank you very much.